Good evening. If there's anyone that'd like to address the board this evening, there are forms back by the door that need to be filled out and given to Mr. Castater, so feel free to do that if you'd like to address the board. It's good to see everybody here this evening. Mr. Castater, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gunther?
Present.
Mr. Beckman?
Present.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Present.
Mrs. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join the board in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Dr. Rice, would you review the agenda with us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Young. Great night ahead of us, as we have a lot of recognitions under the year fund. So tonight, after we get through the formalities, we will all start with a couple of presentations. First, by the Sons of the American Revolution, who are here to hand out an award to one of our teachers. We will recognize all of our retirees. I think that's why we have so many folks in the audience tonight. And then the riveting five-year forecast by Mr. Steve Castater. We'll move on, then, to items for board discussion, and we have several items there, including And then we will move into legislative report, Butler Tech report, and then public comments, if we have anyone that has signed up. From there, we're going to superintendent's reports and recommendations. That's A through H. We will look at our list of graduation candidates. B is payment in lieu of. C, two overnight field trips. D, personnel. E, special education guidelines. F, resolution to adopt special education models, policies, and procedures. G, education affiliation agreement. And then H, policy as read and discussed in April. And then I'll turn it over to Steve.
Yeah, we have a handful of items on the treasurer's report and recommendations. We do have a couple of then-and-now purchase orders, a couple of donations tonight, our normal investment and treasurer's reports. We have two service agreements with the Butler County ESC. We kind of moved towards approving items for next year. And then, as Dr. Rice mentioned, I'll present the five-year forecast, and then we'll ask for your approval on the forecast to submit to the ODE next week.
All right. Sounds great. We have a motion to approve the agenda, as they just read.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Anyone have any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. The agenda is approved. Let's move on to approval of the minutes. Those are the minutes from the April 17th board meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Will you call the roll, please, to approve the minutes?
Yes. Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. The minutes are approved. Okay, time for presentations.
Yes, our first presentation tonight is from some gentlemen from Sons of the American Revolution for an award for one of our teachers. Gentlemen, the floor is yours. There's a microphone up here. If you'd please speak into that.
You can take that off the stand if you'd rather. There you go.
I'm George Stewart, and past president of the Cincinnati chapter of Sons of American Revolution. I'm also the Ohio Society State Historian and Ohio Society SAR American History Teacher Contest Chairman. And with me today as part of our youth outreach program for the Cincinnati chapter are Michael Bloom, Bob Bowers, Michael Gunn, and Vince McKeon. The Sons of American Revolution honors American Revolutionary War patriots, ancestors, by promoting patriotism, serving our communities, educating and inspiring future generations about the founding principles of our country. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. As one of the largest male societies in the country, the SAR boasts tens of thousands of active members and over 550 chapters in the United States and internationally. There are over 33 chapters here in the state of Ohio, and the Cincinnati chapter is the second-largest with over 280 members. Every year, the national headquarters holds the Tom and Betty Lawrence American History Teacher Contest. This award is open to all American history teachers at the middle school and high school levels, recognized as a public, private, or professional institution. This contest aims to recognize and award outstanding educators who distinguish themselves in the classroom, teaching their students on the founding principles of our country. We are here tonight to recognize and award one such educator. And I'm not going to lie to you, getting into schools and publicizing what we do is very hard. And finding an outstanding educator to recognize and award is even harder. And this year, we were pretty lucky. And we found a teacher who was willing to take the challenge and step forward. And I'll ask Lisa Carwich to please step forward. Did you bring a truck or car for your hardware? She was our chapter winner early or late last year, and we'd like to award you with your chapter award and your award, or chapter certificate and award. And Bob Bowers will grant you that.
Congratulations. Your award check and your certificate.
She went on to represent the Ohio chapter at the state contest. I'm so proud to announce tonight that Leah was selected as the Ohio Society Sons of American Revolution Middle School Educator of the Year.
Wow.
Yes, I'm doing that. Since I'm the state chairman, I'd like to present you with your first-place award with your award check. And you can apply next year if you like. Being our state winner, she went on to represent the state of Ohio in our national competition. Even though we did not win a place this year, I was notified by the selection committee that she was the top-five national finalist for the contest. So that's even something I'm very, very proud of. And Michael Bloom will give you your national certificate here. We're not through yet. I'll hand this over to Mike Gunn.
I get the extraordinary pleasure to be able to present my favorite teacher with a bronze good citizenship medal. This is something in addition to all the other teacher things, but it's the manner by which she basically had me personally come into her class, having prepared ahead of time before I was in the classroom, and had an extraordinary ease to bring me into this room with all these young children. And every one of them loved the opportunity to put some hands on some 18th-century stuff that I get to bring into the schools. So here's your bronze good citizenship medal. Glad to do that. Thank you.
After I read her essay for the contest, I wanted to drop while I was doing, immediately come in and sit on your classroom. Okay, very. Are you a coffee drinker?
Yeah, I can be.
Well, my wife was an educator for 25 years, and she could not step into a classroom until she had a fourth glass of coffee. So I'd like to present you with a personalized coffee cup, so you can remember it so as you get up in the morning and come to school. Thank you very much.
Okay. I've been teaching for 21 years in Ross, and it is what I want to do since I was little. So I'm very blessed to be in this district, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Leah, I think I can speak on behalf of the board and say we're very proud of your accomplishments, and we're very lucky and fortunate to have you as a member of our staff. And we appreciate the Sons of the American Revolution and all you do to promote citizenship in our country. Very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing our celebrations tonight, item B is recognition of our retirees. So exciting, exciting time. Before we recognize those individuals, and we will recognize you individually, Mr. Young will be front and center and present you with a gift, and we do ask that you pause just for a second so we can get a picture, so we can properly honor you. I just want to say, on behalf of the district administrative team across the board, thank you for all of your service over these some 32, some 33 years. This district is not who we are without the work that you've done over and over and over again, coming in when the days are long and the times are hard and the days are cold, or when it's May and you're dragging kids across the finish line. We appreciate you so much for that. So again, we will read your name, Mr. Young, if you want to come up front and center. As I call your name, if you'll just come up and be awarded your gift. We'll start with Mr. Robin Baker. Dottie Baxter. Great. They're personalized. Sorry.
Switch your room.
Switch them out.
There we go. Yep. That gold bar that we're giving them, it's got their name in it, so we've got to make sure. Mandy Brozier? Christian Fitz? I don't believe Ms. Robin Hyler. I don't think she's here. I don't believe Brenda's here, but Brenda McConnell? Shelley Martin? Thank you again, and congratulations.
Okay, we're going on to...
Item C, which is the five-year forecast presentation.
Okay. Good enough.
Yeah, this would be a good time. If you don't want to hear, I mean, it's...
For all of our retirees, hopefully the last 30 years to know when to make a good exit.
This is good stuff.
This would be a good time to do that.
Come on up front.
Unless you just want to be riveted by the five-year forecast.
Everyone loves a good spreadsheet.
Plenty of good seats in there.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for letting me present the forecast tonight. Let's do this twice a year, and I think it's good for the community, for the board, for everyone to see where we're at financially and kind of the fiscal health of the district, so to speak, as we look where we're at now and where we project we might be in a few years. So just as a reminder, the purpose of the five-year forecast, it provides three years of history, so we'll look back from FY '22 through '24, look at current year fiscal '25 that we're in the process of wrapping up now, and then look out an additional four years from there. It is a long-range planning and management tool, and it does encompass just the general fund. So we do have other funds that we use, like our permanent improvement fund that we use for buildings. We have a bond fund that we use to pay off the debt for this high school. This is just looking at the general fund in terms of the forecast. It is a snapshot based on assumptions, and so a lot of times the forecast can be a little bit misleading because you're trying to project things that may or may not happen several years out. So we're presenting a forecast based on the information as we know it, as we sit here today, that will change tomorrow. So you have to take it with a grain of salt a bit, but we will talk through some of the specifics and how a few of the areas we can dial in pretty close on where we're actually at. And it is a legal requirement. We have to submit and approve five-year forecasts each in November and May of each fiscal year. So we did the first one in November '24, and this is the May update that we'll submit to the Ohio Department of Education next week. We're going to break this up into three basic pieces. First will be our revenue side, and then we'll look at our expenses, and then we'll tie it all together at the end with revenue expenses versus our ending cash balance. So I'll go through the revenue pieces, and I'll focus primarily on the middle column here, fiscal year 2025, that's highlighted in yellow. These are very general revenue categories over on the left-hand side, so starting at the top with 1.01, which is our general property tax. You can see this year, we're projected to bring in a total of a little over $10 million in property taxes. You can also see how that compares to previous years. So last year, we were up in collections from the previous year, and that is due to the triennial update that we had in Butler County a couple of years ago. So you can see the significance that that 39% increase in property valuation had on our forecast and the overall amount of property taxes that we're collecting. In 2023, we collected $7.5 million, up to about $10.5 million this year. So it was essentially a $3 million increase in property tax collections for the school district. The second line, public utility tax. Those are utility taxes that we get. Those also include pipeline taxes from like the Rockies Pipeline, which runs through our school district. So that number is up this year, 2.3 million. And the reason it's up, and then goes back down the following year, is because we received a delinquent tax payment. The Rockies were involved in an appeal of their taxes. That was settled, and now we received a partial delinquent payment. So that's a kind of a one-time blip on the radar there where that number went up, but we're projecting that we won't receive any additional delinquent payments, so that will level out to a more normal payment that we've seen historically, starting next year in fiscal '26. We do have a 1.25% earned income tax that continues to do really well for us. We'll talk about, you know, how that has gone up over the last several years, but you can see, over the last couple of years, back in 2022, we're at $5.8 million, up almost $1 million here three years later. We typically project that out at about a 2% increase a year. So the figures that you see moving forward, starting in '26 out through '29, that reflects a 2% increase in the earned income tax. The next two lines go together. That is our state funding, restricted and unrestricted. So again, you can see we're about $10 million in state funding. Ross historically has been what we call "flat-funded" by the state. So if you look backwards, that number is about $10 million here. If you went back even further to 2016, 2017, it would be about $10 million there as well. And that's the reason that we're projecting it to be about $10 million moving forward. So we'll talk about some of the factors that go into that as we move forward and explain some of the revenue pieces, but we have been historically flat-funded by the state of Ohio. Includes the restricted funding there as well, and a couple of other pieces at the bottom, state share of local property taxes, that's the homestead, and rollback, the state pays a portion of your property taxes for you, and they send that money to us. So that, all told, we're looking at about $34 million in revenue for this fiscal year, up about $2.5 million from last year's total of $31 million. How do we get to those numbers with the assumptions, both for the current year and the forecasted years moving forward? Property tax collections continue to beat forecasted estimates due to the 2023 triennial update. This is the first year that we received the full collection amount from that 2023 update. Last year, it was basically a half of a collection increase. This year, the fall and the spring both received the full increase. Our earned income tax continues to provide steady revenue growth. We're up 7.3% in fiscal '25. And again, just as a reminder, state funding is projected flat for future forecast years, and that's mostly due to the historical fact that we've been flat-funded and uncertainty with how the state budgeting process goes. That's an important piece to remember. We're asked to do a five-year forecast, the state does their budget two years at a time. So we have no idea beyond the biennium cycle what could potentially happen moving forward with the state budgeting process and how that might impact our amount of state funding. Future revenue assumptions, this is kind of long-picture looking ahead. Legislative action to property tax laws and 20 mil floor, that's been a topic around the state for the last couple of years. There are several variations of bills that have been proposed. I think there's one floating around now that would actually eliminate property tax in the state of Ohio. I'm not sure how they're going to replace all those funds and all the things that those funds pay for, like police and fire and roads and all those things. So we're always keeping an eye on those legislative actions, and the fact that we're on the 20 mil floor is what allows us to receive those increases from the property valuation. So they've talked about changing the laws around the 20 mil floor as well, maybe lowering it to 15, doing away with it completely. That's something we'll keep an eye on from the state house as we move forward. Real estate reappraisal, you know, the one just happened, the triennial update just happened in 2023. We are getting a full reappraisal again in 2026. It happens every three years. So our forecast assumption is an 8% increase in Class 1 and 2 real estate for that full reappraisal. And we'll just have to see where that lands. It could be higher, it could be lower. Right now, statewide, this is about what people are figuring in as an increase for that full reappraisal in calendar year 2026. As we mentioned, the state biennium budget, we are in a budget year, so the state's currently debating the biennium budget for fiscal years '26 and '27. A lot of questions with that. The fair school funding formula has been partially phased in over a series of years, hoping that they would continue to do that and update the cost inputs for us. But that's kind of gone back and forth and been debated at the state house thus far, so we'll have to see where that lands. And where that ultimately ends up is a key revenue piece for us, so that we won't know until, I'm guessing, the last day in June, what our state budget's going to look like for the next two fiscal years. The other thing that's important to point out when it comes to our revenue is that our district enrollment continues to decline. Looked back at previous forecasts and through the Ohio Department of Education Cup report, our ADM, which is Average Daily Membership, which is how they count your district enrollment, in fiscal year 2016, we were at 28.36. Fiscal '24, which is the latest available information, we were down to 23.12. So our district enrollment does continue to decline, and the reason that's important is through any type of funding mechanism at the state level, they're not going to give you more money for less kids. And so that's something we'll keep an eye on as we move forward, regardless of how the formula or how the funding ends up. Now we'll move on to the expense side. Again, I've highlighted the current year fiscal '25. We are people business, so you'll see that the majority of our expenses do have to do with personnel services. So personnel services would be our salaries, employees' insurance and retirement benefits. We also have purchase services, which are things that we contract from educational service centers, transportation, some of those things that we're not able to employ and provide ourselves. Those are very nominal increases as you move forward in those lines, like the retirement, like the purchase services, supplies and materials. We build in a nominal increase every year for those moving forward, but nothing really out of the ordinary that we're seeing right now. And you'll see at the end, our expenses are close to the November forecast and this version of the forecast. I think we're going to be, I call it like a photo finish, down to the wire to our actual expenses. So I think we're in good shape with what we're forecasting now. I will point out, line 4.05, which is an energy loan program through the state of Ohio. We currently have an ELF loan that we're paying a very low interest rate on, 0.25%. That allowed us to do a lot of energy upgrades several years ago, including LED lighting in all of our buildings, updating HVAC controls, new windows, things like that. We are looking at doing a second phase to that program. That has not been approved yet, it's not official, but we did go ahead and build in those figures to the forecast, starting in '26, moving out through '29, just in case we do move forward with that. I'll have more information later this summer, and we'll have a presentation about what those projects could entail if we decide to move forward with a second phase of that energy loan program. The other pieces are, other objects is essentially revenue that doesn't, or expenditures that don't fit into one of those other categories. So all told, again, you'll see this in a clearer form here on a couple of slides, but our total expenditures projected this year, $31.3 million, and you can see the increase as the rise to expenditures. Typically, our forecast now, we're looking at about a 2.5% annual increase in revenue and about a 5% increase in expenditures. So you can see, when I show the other chart, you'll be able to see kind of how that impacts our overall position with our cash balance. Expenditure assumptions, again, staffing levels, we have remaining flat. We do not have any additional positions built into the forecast. Again, with our declining enrollment, I don't think it makes sense to think that we're going to add any new positions or bring back any additional replacement positions that might have been eliminated during some of our times that we were cutting. We are estimating $250,000 in attrition savings for FY '26. You saw the large group of retirees here. As we replace those positions, we generally realize a savings from those moves that we make. Base salary increase assumptions, we have 6% built in for FY '26, and then a 2.5% estimate in for years '27 through '29. And our steps cost us 2.1% annually, so those compound over time, too, which is what attributes to that, usually your expenses kind of going up quicker than what your revenue does. The other thing I think it's important to realize, a couple of years ago, we negotiated some fixed rates on some of our utility costs, and those are doing really well for us. Just one example, we negotiated an electric rate with Duke Energy for Elda, and our current rate that we negotiated and locked in, 6.29 cents per kilowatt hour. The current Duke rate that was just announced is 11.2 cents per kilowatt hour. So we're realizing almost a 50% savings because we locked in that low rate two years ago. We also did the same with our natural gas suppliers. We're realizing some savings there as well, and those are good things for us. Those things all add up when you look at the amount of utilities that, you know, five, six buildings throughout the district, if you include the bus garage that we're paying for. Duke is just servicing Elda, the rest of our buildings are on Butler Rule, but that is a pretty significant savings for us through our utility cost. Future expenditure assumptions moving out when we look at FY '26 through '29, again, staffing levels projected to be flat to slightly less as the district enrollment continues to decline. We are in year two of a three-year contract with Medical Mutual of Ohio for our health insurance. We negotiated that for a three-year contract at a 0% increase. So we haven't, we'd have not seen an increase this year, we will not see an increase next So we haven't, we'd have not seen an increase this year, we will not see an increase next year in the cost of our medical benefits for our employees. When that contract is up, what's that? Oh, sorry. Softball one, good news. Yeah. When we negotiate that new contract, we're anticipating that we will see an increase. We're projecting that to be at 9% annually when we, when we agree to hopefully another two or three-year deal. Again, we'll see where that's at. A lot of that information is based on our claims data, so we'll see where our claims are at when we go to, to market bid for the new insurance and see where that lands. The other thing we, we've got an eye on here, moving out towards the end of the forecast, curriculum needs, we, I believe we did an excellent job with our ESSER funds and purchasing long-term subscriptions and contracts for a lot of curriculum materials. Those, those things are going away. So the six, seven-year contracts that we purchased back when we initially received the ESSER funds, those are expiring FY '29, FY '30. So at the end of those contracts, we will need to renew for those materials and we've got an eye on that. Mrs. Dobler and Mrs. Wright and curriculum office do a great job of keeping that on the radar and, and radar and negotiating low rates for those long-term contracts on our curriculum materials. All right, so this kind of ties it all together, revenue versus expenditures. A couple of things to note here. So as you can see, looking at FY '25, we are, revenue is ahead of expenditures. So we're anticipating we're going to bring in a little over 34 million in revenue. We're going to spend a little over 31 million, which is obviously an excess of revenue over expenditures. That leaves us having a cash, an estimated cash balance at the end of the fiscal year of $8.2 million. The column at the bottom, or the row at the bottom here, the true days cash, 60 days is typically a benchmark that the state kind of best practice that they want you to have in reserve. So if the schools close tomorrow or our funding stops tomorrow, how long could you operate your school district based on the cash that you have essentially in your savings account? So 60 days is where you want to be. We're projecting to end this fiscal year at 103 days. And then you look out a couple of years, we're still above that benchmark in '26, '27, and then dip slightly below in '28 before it, you know, again, projected to go off in '29. Again, I think it's important that when you're looking at a five-year forecast, you focus on the current year and the next year. Those are, those are the two years that we can really dial in on our revenue and expenditures. Anything out beyond that, you know, you're talking about a new state budget, there's all kinds of things, who knows where the actual reappraisal percentage will come in. All of those things are, impact the forecast in a big way. So really looking at this year, next year, a little bit out into '27. So we're on solid footing in terms of our cash balance moving forward for the next, next couple of years. This just outlines a couple of changes from the November forecast. So in November, we forecasted our revenue to be at 33.5 million. We're forecasting it now to be at 34.067. The reason for that increase is the income tax being up higher than we anticipated and we are receiving a slight increase in property tax collections. There was more new construction than we had figured in previously and the amount of delinquent taxes. I think a lot of people at the state level were worried that delinquent taxes would go up with the large property tax increase, but we really haven't seen that in our school district in terms of people being late on paying their, paying their property taxes. So that, that's the result for the increase in revenue from the November forecast to the May forecast. Expenses, we're leaving exactly the same. Like I mentioned, I think we're going to have a photo finish to where we're actually going to be. I'd love to hit it right on, like I think that would be something if we could actually hit our expenses right on the number. So we'll see. But we, it'll be close to where we're at. And that results in a change in the ending cash balance in November. We predicted our ending cash balance in FY '25 to be 8.2 million. Now we're saying it's going to be closer to 8.8 because of those changes in revenue. And that is all I have.
Any questions from the board members? Or clarifications? I think it's, the one, one thing I heard loud and clear was that you're saying that revenue is projected to go up approximately 2.5% and expenditures are going to go up at double that rate of five some percent each year.
Correct.
So there's going to be, push is going to come to shove here very soon, and I think that's important.
It is.
Given what's happened over the last several years with levy attempts, I don't see our community saying, okay, we're thrilled to vote on a new levy after the large property tax increase that the county and state imposed on people. So I think it's important for us to think about how can we do something different in order to make our fiscal situation solid.
Yeah, it's a great point. You can, you can see that from this chart here in '26, we, we start seeing a little bit of deficit spending where expenditures overtake our revenue just slightly. And then that does, that is projected to increase as we move out through the, through the end of the forecast.
Yeah, because right now, the state, the next two-year state budget, if, if, I don't know whether it's changed much lately, but I think we were only scheduled to get maybe 50,000 more next year than we're getting this year. And then, I mean, over the two years, we're only scheduled to get 50,000 more dollars from state over two years. That's not even enough to hire a teacher.
Right.
Or pay for a teacher. So I think that's of concern for sure. And it just seems like every day there's other negative news coming out of Columbus about fiscal support for public schools. So we got to get that figured out.
The state has certainly made it clear in many ways where their priorities lie right now, and it doesn't seem to be with, with the public schools.
Anyone else? Thank you. Really, really a fine report. Thank you, very detailed. Appreciate your effort on that. Okay, items for discussion?
Yes, sir. First item for discussion tonight is letter A, policy. We'll start with policy I, GBA, which is program for students with disabilities. You will see later on in the board agenda, we'll have two different items to take action on. This has been an ongoing thing that the state has been working on. Actually, we were supposed to have approved this a couple of months ago, but there is a whole bunch of litigation and lawyers involved clearing up some language with that. So we'll begin tonight with this policy. This is the Ohio Operating Standards for Education, Education of Children with Disabilities. It requires that school districts adopt written policies and procedures regarding educating children with disabilities. To comply with this requirement, we must do the following. Adopt the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Special Education policies, model policies and procedures, which we'll do later. We also have to notify ODU of, of their special education policies and procedures by May 30th, we'll take care of that tonight. And then verify local school board approval of the district's special education policies and procedures annually by November 30th. So we will start to do this next year by November 30th of each year. And again, later in the board meeting, you'll, you'll be asked to vote to approve the mandatory guidelines and resolution in response to those guidelines. Is there any questions about I, GBA? Policy BD, school board meetings. This allows members of a public body, so including school boards, to hold and attend meetings and conduct and conduct and attend hearings by video conference. The big thing being, if we do that by video conference for one of you, we have to do it for the general public as well. Any questions about BD? The next three policies are all related. DECA, administration of federal grant funds, and DID, inventories, fixed assets, and DJF, purchasing procedures. These changes are coming from the Ohio Auditor of State's recent bulletin, which summarizes the key changes that directly impact how districts use and account for funds. Review of the full bulletin can, is available. Processes involving fraud, conflict of interest, bribery or gratuitous violations, districts must inform employees in written whistleblower rights and protections. And that was something you guys actually participated in as well, that fraud training. The equipment capitalization threshold for items purchased with federal funds has been increased to five, from 5,000 to 10,000. The bulletin also specifies that recipients and sub- recipients must document internal controls and recipients and sub- recipients must take reasonable cybersecurity and other measures to safeguard information. Any questions about those three policies? Next, we have policy I, actually this is a regulation, I G C H R, that's also L E C R. More about credit flex, I swear, I think we do college credit plus like every three months. This clarifies some dates and deadlines and focuses primarily on charter schools and the host institutes of higher education. Any questions about those policies? Next, we have another regulation, J H C D R 1, administering prescription medications to students. New Ohio Revised Code amended the law. It identifies two classes now, prescription and over the counter, and requires that the board have a policy on administering each of these drugs to students. It also defines the classes of drugs. Any policies on those, or questions on those policies? Two more, J H G, reporting child abuse and mandatory training. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code, this bill permits, instead of requires, so this is a big change, as under federal law, as under former law, the child sexual abuse prevention training be done and delivered by law enforcement officers or prosecutors with experience. So previous law said it had to be done by law enforcement or prosecutors, made it almost impossible to find these folks because they're running around doing this for everyone. So now permits that, but it doesn't require that. Any questions about J H G? And the last one we have tonight is K B A, Public Rights to Know. House Bill 265, which was effective in April, modifies the process whereby an individual submitting a public records request can file a complaint. So this is about a complaint procedure if they feel, the person that's filed this, if that person feels that the district hasn't responded quick enough. Previous to this policy change, it automatically went to the courts. So they've added another step in there before it goes to the courts. Any questions about K B A? That's all I have for policy this evening.
Just for the public's knowledge, the board received copies of those ahead of time and had the opportunity to review them. So if we don't have questions, that doesn't mean there weren't questions prior to the meeting. All right, legislative report?
Nothing to report this month, nothing new.
Okay, I did have a question about the, there's been a amendment proposed by somebody to do away with property tax in the state of Ohio. And I saw where, is it the Attorney General?
The wording got approved today.
The wording got approved today, right?
Correct.
So the wording's been approved, now they've got to collect 400 and some thousand,
400,000 signatures.
From different counties around the state, there's regulations about that. So is there any, Steve, you heard anything regarding chances that actually happening or not, or?
The only, the only thing I've heard is it, it feels like because there's no solution on the backside, that I'm hearing that the major fire unions, police unions, people around the state, because there's no, no answer on how it would eventually be funded, that all of the major unions and a lot of the programs in Ohio would be opposed to that type of legislation without a fix in the works, basically. So I don't, at this point, I don't think it really has any legs to be able to get off the ground. But if it, if it gets on the ballot, you never know what could happen, right? I mean, if it makes it to the ballot.
If you're a property owner and you're like, oh, I don't have to pay property tax.
I think it gets on the ballot because somebody's going to come up to the mall and say, yeah, right, here, let's do away with property tax, sign right here, we're putting an amendment up, people, you'll get a vote on it.
Right.
They'll get the 400,000 signatures in a week.
Well, if it does get on the ballot, I'd say that schools and
Right.
Other public entities that are funded by property taxes, better, we better get busy and figure out how we're going to get the word out that that would absolutely destroy any public services.
Any public services.
I don't know how you can propose a law or a change without having the backside of it taken care of, but here's what we're going to do to replace it.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to increase your license plate about a dollar, you know, charge sales tax that goes to this specific, you know, whatever. But I don't know how you could put that on there without having a backside to it, but I guess you can do whatever you want if you've got enough attorney money and time and effort now.
Let's, let's hope nothing comes of it. Well, while you're talking, Mr. Kleinfelder, you can give us the Butler Tech report.
All right, well, it was a pretty simple meeting the other night, really only two things to vote on. One was the approval of their five-year forecast. Of note, they are very concerned about that new carryover law, 30%. Mr. Carpenter's sitting on about a $30 million carryover at the end of the five-year forecast. They are building buildings and stuff without passing bond issues. They're funded in a totally different manner. If every public school was funded that way, it would be really good.
I ask Mr. Carpenter for a donation every treasurer's meeting we have. So far, no go.
He, he does a really great job with it, but there must be a treasurer class where they say this thing will be out of date and invalid as soon as it's sent to the state because he had several warnings that they don't know what's going on. And it's hard when you're dealing with the state with a two-year budget cycle and schools are required to put a five-year budget out there with three years being guesswork. The other important item we voted on is Butler Tech Board, we approved the Teachers' Association. They got a 3, 3, 3, 3%, 3%, 3% over the next three years. And May 20th, XU will be their senior ceremony, starting at seven o'clock. For those of you that have seniors in Butler Tech programs, get there early and it's going to be a long evening because there's 695 seniors that are going to be recognized that night, so it'll take a little while to get across the stage. And that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, did we have time for our public comments time of the meeting? Did anyone present any?
I do not have any forms.
Okay, no requests, okay, very good. Move on then. Let's go to the superintendent's recommendations. Superintendent's recommendations.
Yes, sir. First item I have under reports and recommendations is letter A, 2025 candidates for graduation. These students, by the time of graduation, will have met all state and local requirements for graduation. Item B, payment in lieu of, this deals with transportation. Item C, two overnight field trips for the summer for our athletic teams. Item D, personnel, this includes hiring, pending verification of training, experience, BCI and FBI reports. This includes summer custodial staff, summer curriculum work, stipends and resignations and retirements. Item E is the special education guidelines. As I mentioned earlier, E and F are directly related. The guidelines came out and the lawyers got involved because they didn't like a lot of the language. They have since then agreed on a resolution, so that's item F, that talks about what they don't agree with the guidelines. So item E is the special education guidelines that we will approve every year, beginning next year. And then item F is the lawyer speak, essentially, the resolution that they've agreed to about those guidelines. Item G is education affiliation. This allows our athletic trainer to have a trainer in training, then student teacher. And then item H is policy approval as read and discussed in April. That's all the items I have for recommendations this evening.
Okay. You want to explain that payment in lieu of transportation real quickly, just so people can understand what that is?
Yeah, absolutely. Part of public schools' responsibility is to transport all students that live in the public school. So that can include one student that goes to a private school 30 miles away. And a lot of times, the payment in lieu, the state sets a rate where we can pay the parent instead of sending a big yellow bus all the way for one student. So that's essentially what that means. It's much more cost efficient to do that.
Yes. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations?
A through H?
Yes. Thank you. Motion. We have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the items A through H? Hearing none, call the rule, please.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Castater?
Letters A through F tonight, we do have one then and now for your approval. A couple of donations this month, our monthly red cherry investment report. We have two service agreements, one for audiology through the Butler County ESC and a mobility service for visually impaired students as well. Again, this is for fiscal year '26, moving into next school year. We're just starting that process of approving those agreements now. Our standard monthly reports are cash summary and financial snapshot and then the five-year forecast.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the treasurer's items A through F?
I'll make the motion.
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Motion passes. Board committees, do we have reports from board committees? Facilities or finance?
Yeah, I'll go first. We had a finance committee this past month. We reviewed what Steve just did in ten minutes, took a lot longer and the finance committee meeting went into a lot of detail and each of those line items has meaning behind it. There was a lot of discussion on, you know, how to, how to project the right amount to make everything as, as clear as possible and everything, everything looks good, so.
Okay, facilities?
Yeah, facilities, we had a meeting a few days ago. A few things that we were working on, Steve touched on this earlier during his presentation. We are looking at some different projects that maybe we may be able to roll into that ELF program. So that is one of the things we're looking at. We are also looking into the dugout replacements for both the softball and softball fields. We are trying to, you know, see if we can get that done in a cost-effective manner. We have some different paving repair option, or some paving repair projects that are going to be going on throughout some of the campuses. Stair treads at the RIS building, that's become a concern mainly from an ADA, or I'm sorry.
This building.
The stair treads are at the high school, that's the ADA compliance that we have to, basically, we're going to have to redo the stair treads. I believe we're also going to have to incorporate a, kind of a, we'll call it a gold stripe to meet ADA guidelines there. We have some flat roof work that we're going to have to look at on the high school, that will be coming up soon. We also have some heaters that are going to be installed at Elda and the middle school. These are some of the cold rooms, cold spots in the buildings where our standard HVA system is not able to keep up. So I'm hoping that's some good news for a lot of, a lot of people in the community. So we are going to be addressing that here soon. The other thing are the steps out front of the RIS building. They are starting to kind of crumble again. We've been told that the paint that we've used for the, kind of the sealing of the surfaces has pretty much ended its useful life and it's starting to show. So we're going to have to look into some options there as far as getting that replaced. So we had a little bit of a busy meeting last week, so.
Does the district have a, a roof map that kind of shows a bird's eye view of all the roofs?
Yeah. Devon has that.
And then?
Yeah.
Okay.
When, when they were put on and so we got a, kind of a plan down the road that we're
using?
Correct. Yeah, and the, the high school is, is the, kind of the next on that agenda.
And we have a preventative maintenance plan, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's take an opportunity to go around the table here and any board members that would like to make a comment prior to adjournment, please feel free to do so. Mr. Kleinfelder?
Congrats to all the retirement folks. I hope they enjoy it as much as I am. There's nothing better and good luck to them and good luck to all our seniors. Hope we have a nice, safe next couple, eight days and get through graduation and move on with summer.
Okay.
All right. I wanted to, again, thank all the retirees for their years of service, congratulate them on retirement. Also wanted to extend a congratulations to Ms. Carwish for wonderful awards she received tonight and just thanks again for what everyone's doing.
Mr. Gunther?
Yeah, that's, you guys kind of hit a lot of the topics there. What they said, but, you know, good luck to all the students that have a lot of really big decisions, whether you've already made it and you're headed off into the work world or the school world or whatever entails you, just know that you've got good support behind you and hopefully you've learned a lot and have, enjoy life.
Mrs. Webb?
Ditto. I just want to congratulate all of the retirees and thank them for just, I mean, having an impact in both my, my life and, and my, my children's lives. I have stories from Dottie Baxter and my daughter was in kindergarten and she still has her little like piggy bank that, you know, Ms. Dottie gave her, sitting on her dresser and from Julie Jarvis, being just a wonderful teacher to both my older girls and just getting to work with Robin Baker. I got to work with him for four years, so just, just those lasting friendships and I just wish them all the best in their next chapter at life. Same thing, I want to congratulate Ms. Carwish as well and good luck to all of the graduating seniors, hope next Tuesday or next Friday goes great. Thanks.
Yeah, it's tough seeing that amount of experience leaving. Those are some great teachers and staff members that we honor tonight. We really will miss them and we wish them the very best in their future endeavors, no doubt about it. Leah's done a great job for us. I'm happy to, it's always great to see staff members get recognized for their efforts and she certainly deserved that, no doubt about it. All right. I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to prepare for, conduct, or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms or conditions of their employment and for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, emotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we do have a second. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. So the board will be moving into executive session for the purposes I expressed. We will adjourn following the executive session and will not be taking any further action on anything for the rest of the evening. Thank you very much for being here. Have safe travel home.